And good evening. Welcome to the April 29th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you in the audience that are with us. We're glad to have those that are at home that are watching. At this time, I'm going to ask you to please stand as we have three students to lead us in our pledge tonight. Jackson Francis, a fourth grade student at Reeves Rogers, and Maddox Perkins, a kindergarten student, and overall Creek. Follow them by them on the side.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand now on the side. Thank you. All right, members of the board, you have seen a copy of the agenda. We have a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any questions or comments? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Communication, Ms. Trejo.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
First, I want to say congratulations to all of the students who were represented here tonight at the City Art Show. It was a great event, and they did such great work, and our art teachers as well. And I know Ms. Arnett is going to cover that. So we're also going to be taking time next week, or actually tomorrow, to honor our backpack volunteers that come in every week and pack those bags for us. So you are welcome to join us. We'll be at April 30th at noon. Again, that's tomorrow. Also, I want to say a huge thank you to Ms. Price and all of the Girl Scouts who have brought us thousands of bags for our backpack program. So thank you so much. I just wanted to shout out for you because I know it was your service unit, and without you, we would not have had that happen. And it just came at the best, best time. MCS Math Madness Contest for fourth and fifth grades will be held on May 13th at Patterson Park Community Center. I know that our math teachers, our math coaches are really getting that together and excited about that. So can't wait to see who the winners are for that. We're also going to be honoring our 2024-25 retirees on May 22nd at noon at the central office. So all those retirees, whether they're still with us or they retired sometime this year, are welcome to join us. We want to see them again and hear about what retirement looks like. Also, I want to make sure that you mark on your calendar. Special Olympics is May 5th at MTSU. So Chairman Campbell, I'm sure we will see you there, May 5th, MTSU. It will begin at nine o'clock, and I think that's the parade and everything at nine o'clock. If you really want to see the excitement, come to our schools as they're getting on the bus to go. That's the fun part. Teacher Appreciation Week is also next week, so thank a teacher and pat them on the back or bring them a cup of coffee. Do want to take time to congratulate our MCS spellers that competed in the Read to Succeed Spelling Bee on last Friday night. Alex Smallen, Nathan Blanchett, Brianna Cole, Evelyn Strickland, Joseph Davenport, Summer, Penny, and Elijah Chesterfield. And sir, those are our communications for tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. I have one announcement I want to make at this time. I want to thank the people of Murfreesboro for selecting quality individuals to be on our school board. We have got, in my opinion, the best school board anywhere around. We don't bicker, we get along, we don't have our own agendas. You don't see any major controversies at our board meetings. And I want to say that's a thank you to these board members. As chairman, I am thrilled at that, to work with such wonderful people on the school board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn it to Dr. Duke.
All right, Dr. Duke.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Campbell, and good evening, school board.
Good evening.
We are thrilled tonight to represent or to recognize our April Best of MCS honoree and thank this employee for the hard work they contribute to our school system and representing all the great things that we do here at Murfreesboro City and being that employee that just embodies those characteristics. So I am pleased to ask Ms. Hague, who is the cafeteria manager at John Pittard Elementary, to join me here at the podium. Rebecca has been with us for 21 years. She has been serving the students at Murfreesboro City Schools and the school nutrition team. During her tenure, she has worked both at Northfield and at John Pittard. I was talking to Ms. Hague, and she told me that working in school nutrition is her heart. She says she enjoys the children and the city school staff that she gets to work with, and she says she has been pleased to work with four amazing school principals, Dr. Jean Lloyd, Ms. Roseanne Barton, Mr. Adam Bryson, and Dr. Christie Robinson. Rebecca actually received several nominations for this award, which speaks to the value others see in the work she does. Our school nutrition supervisors, Ms. Jaclyn Saunders, said that since joining Murfreesboro City Schools in 2004, Rebecca has dedicated 21 years to ensuring that every student she serves is well-fed, cared for, and valued. Her unwavering commitment is apparent even in the face of challenges. Despite running a short-staffed kitchen for part of the year, she has maintained an incredible attitude, always remaining positive, encouraging, and a joy to work with. All of this while preparing breakfast for over 500 students and lunch for over 600 each day. Ms. Saunders continued by saying that Rebecca is one of the hardest-working individuals she knows and embodies the core values that MCS stands for. Her dedication, resilience, compassion make her truly deserving of this recognition. Ms. Steely, who also works in our school nutrition department, said that Rebecca is always willing to lend her experience and guidance to help in strengthening the growth of the nutrition department. Her dedication and passion to her role is apparent in the way she goes above and beyond to ensure all students in her building are taken care of. Rebecca is often the go-to for nutritional support throughout the department. Her willingness to help and her eagerness to strive for a district where no child is ever hungry truly makes her a valuable asset to MCS. Finally, Mr. Owens in our finance department stated that Rebecca is dedicated to the students of John Pittard by focusing on a nutritional meal and a welcoming environment. This approach allows her to make students feel comfortable and empowered when choosing their meals and enjoying their lunch break. She personally wants the students to feel they are receiving their best meal ever. Rebecca told me that she loves to cook and see the happy faces when students come through the serving line, and especially if one of their favorite foods is being served that day, it just makes her day. She told me, and I love this story, she told me that a few weeks ago, she was a bit busy cooking in the back of the kitchen. So there was a couple days that she did not make it out to the serving line when fourth grade was out there. And when she finally made it out, one of the students said to her, "Where have you been, Ms. Rebecca? We have not seen you in days." She said, "And that's right there is the big why and the reason I love what I do. I do it for the students." Rebecca, we are so grateful that you are part of our district. There is no doubt that you are making a significant difference for our students, for our staff, and we are so honored to celebrate you as the Best of MCS. And I think a true testament, can I have all the nutritional staff that came to support her stand-up, all the school nutrition staff? And so, when I see so many staff come out to celebrate a coworker, I think it speaks to the value she brings to our district. So Rebecca, thank you for representing the best of MCS.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to have to stand on my little step stool.
That's okay.
You know, I really can't do what I do every day without the support of my staff. And we did run shorthanded this year, but we did it, and I really could not have done it without them. And I really couldn't do it without my principal because there was days I had that line for breakfast and one breakfast line running all the way down the hallway. But I got them there on time, though, didn't I? I did get them there on time. And honestly, I work with a bunch of men and women that run kitchens on a daily, and they are the best staff that your city schools has as cafeteria managers and assistants. We really have the best team. And I hope we can move forward and do a lot good in the years to come and a few changes, maybe. And I hope we just get to keep and get new staff in that are just as good as the ones that we have right now. Thank you so much.
And if I can add, and I didn't say it, and this was not intentional, but Friday, we're actually celebrating its National School Lunch Hero Day. So thank you to all our cafeteria staff. They work really hard. So congratulations, Rebecca.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Spotlight on education, Dr. Duke.
Yes, this month, we are so excited to spotlight the art program we offer here in Murfreesboro City School for our Spotlight on Education. Earlier tonight, it was wonderful to celebrate our annual Student Art Show with our students in the City Hall Rotunda. And tonight, I'm pleased to welcome two of our amazing art educators, Ms. Dee Dee Potter from Hobgood Elementary and Ms. Sasha Burnett from John Pittard, to the podium for a brief spotlight on our educational art program today.
First, thank you guys for allowing us to take the moment to spotlight our education. I wanted to recognize some of our art show winners before we got started. So if you hear your name, please stand up. Let's recognize you. And before I do that, I want to say thank you to our school board, our administration, but to Tori Carr. She takes so much time to organize everything, make sure the art teachers have exactly what they need, and it's amazing when you have support like that. So I want to give a huge shout-out to Tori Carr and all of you. Thank you so much. So our MCS Art Show winners, Best in Show, grades K through 2, Lennon from Salem Elementary. Grades 3 through 6, Imron from Discovery. Our first-place winner in kindergarten is Lennon from Salem Elementary. First-grade first-place winner is Ariana from Hobgood. Our second-grade first-place winner is Maurice from Black Fox. Our first-place winner in third grade is Montana from Black Fox. First place in fourth grade is Kaylee from Discovery. First-place winner in fifth grade is Imron from Discovery. And our first place in sixth grade is Carl from Black Fox. And we're so proud of all of our students that participated in the art show. So our Spotlight on Education.
Yes, please. Just hit play. You're fine. Go ahead and just hit your play, your full screen play.
Teamwork makes the dream work. Good evening, everyone. Today, Ms. Potter and I are excited to share why fine arts are essential in education and to celebrate our MCS art educators. Fine arts aren't just extracurricular. They're a fundamental part of a well-rounded education.
Our MCS art teachers truly rock. Every week, we impact over 9,300 students. That's a lot of students. Their dedication fuels creativity, emotional growth, academic connections across our district.
Art is fundamental. It nurtures creativity, develops fine motor skills, enhances problem-solving, and offers students a powerful outlet for self-expression every day. It integrates naturally with history, science, and math, making these subjects more engaging. It's very rewarding to see that aha moment in the art room when we do that. Art connects directly to future careers. It's a vital part of STEAM, encouraging innovation and creative problem-solving skills essential for tomorrow's leaders and thinkers.
DOT Day and Fine Arts Night, we celebrate creativity with events like DOT Day, encouraging our students to make their mark. Our Fine Arts Night, like John Pittard Elementary's showcase, and Hobgood's STEAM Tacular bring students, families, and art together in such wonderful ways.
And I can honestly say, when we do have our art shows and STEAM Taculars, it's so amazing to see all of the parents and the families come out. They really do support our arts programs, all of the STEAM activities that we have going on, and it's very rewarding to see that each year. MTSU's education, cultural symposiums, and professional art developments have been amazing for the art educators. We're proud of community partnerships with MTSU, Bradley Museum, and city organizations. Art shows like tonight, or the Special Education Art Show in February, give students public platforms to showcase their talents.
MTSU education, cultural symposiums, and professional developments have been an amazing resource for our MCS art educators. Ten years of MTSU's Winter Circle, Circle of Art Show, I'm sorry, Winter Circle Art Show, this makes our 10th year celebrating with MTSU.
And all of our students not only get to participate in the city, but they get to meet student artists in the county as well, which is amazing. And they get to meet art professors. They get to see that these careers are possible in the future. So we love that partnership with MTSU every year. Our students' artwork has been displayed in many museums over the years, such as the Frisk Art Museum for the past six years, and Murfreesboro City Schools shows out every year. We bring in the most kids. We love that. We partner with Cheekwood Estate. Ms. Potter and I both, we love to bring Cheekwood to our kids through Cheekwood on the Road and Destination Cheekwood. It's blending art, nature, science, and family engagement, not only showing them that there's art here in Murfreesboro, but if you just keep going out a little bit further, there's more art every day.
Art touches every part of our lives, from the spaces that we inhabit to ideas that we share. Through creativity, we build stronger communities, inspire innovation, and enrich everyone's lives.
Thank you so much for supporting the arts in our schools. Your encouragement fuels our students' creativity and growth, helping them succeed both inside and outside of the classroom. Thank you so much, everyone.
I believe I can remember when art was looked upon as just being able to draw a straight line. But it's not that way anymore. At this time, I'd like to recognize two of our visitors tonight, Mr. Gary Lilly, who is the Executive Director of TOS, and also Barry Allhouse, who is the Assistant Director for a special presentation. Gentlemen, well.
Thank you so much. Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
My colleague Barry Allhouse and I are honored to be here this evening. I am Gary Lilly, the Executive Director of the Tennessee Organization of School Superintendents, also known as TOS. So TOS, in case you don't know, we support superintendents of public schools in a number of ways. We have various membership services, provide professional development, and legislative advocacy. But I'm not really here to talk about TOS this evening. I am here to talk about your superintendent of schools. Dr. Duke is respected throughout our state as an excellent leader with vision and a go-to resource who is happy to share his wealth of knowledge that he has acquired over the course of his exceptional career. It was evident early on that he was an up-and-comer when he was recognized as a superstar Millikan National Educator. He continued to excel in a number of roles as he gained experience from federal projects to curriculum, to technology, and school leadership. Given all that he has accomplished and his willingness to collaborate and share, Dr. Duke's counterparts in the Mid Cumberland region and really across the state listen when he speaks, as they value his experience, his judgment, and his advice. That's evident as the superintendent in the region has asked him to lead the Superintendent Study Council for the Mid Cumberland Group. So you can tell that I'm a fan of Dr. Duke. I personally admire him. But so you know, what I'm about to announce is not from me. This is from his peers, which I think even means more. But it is my honor and privilege to let you know that Superintendent Dr. Trey Duke has been selected as the Mid Cumberland Superintendent of the Year. The criteria that is set by AASA, which is the National Superintendent's Association for this award, include leadership for learning, communication, professionalism, and community involvement. So at this time, I would love to present this plaque to Dr. Duke.
We'd love to invite his family up to have a photo with him.
Thank you again. We're very proud of Dr. Duke.
Thank you very much.
We are too. Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, as a reminder, he's our superintendent. No one better poach him or approach him to be poached.
If I can't say, I do want to say thank you to Gary and Barry. They do an amazing job supporting us as superintendents and making sure we're equipped. So many of the things that I send to you guys about things we need to be paying attention to, things come directly from TOS, so they make us look really well good as well, and they do a great job supporting them. But thank you guys very much. It's an honor. Thank you.
Gentlemen, we thank you very much. I don't know where you came from. How far did you drive?
Nashville this evening, which took a while. I understand.
Okay. Well, we appreciate you very much coming in. We kind of agree with what you're saying about Trey Duke.
Yeah, we're kind of a fan, too. Absolutely.
All right, next item on the agenda, public comment. And I don't think we have anybody that wants to speak publicly tonight. Consent items. Members of the board, you have seen a list of the consent items. We have a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. More? I'll get it in a minute. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Now, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right. We're going now to the action items. Approval of the 2526 General Purpose Fund Budget.
Yes, sir. Tonight, we are presenting the 2526 General Purpose School Budget to the board for approval. This budget includes projected revenues and expenditures associated with the district's operational programming. The 2526 certified and classified salary scales and differentiated pay plans are also presented with this budget. Salary adjustments have been made to ensure all employees receive a minimum of 2.5% salary increase. For our viewing public, it's important to state that this budget and the next few budget items are the culmination of many hours of work from the district staff and the board. The board has engaged in roughly eight hours of workshops, reviewing projected revenues, proposed expenditures, and discussing how to best use the available funds to maximize student learning. The budget staff is presenting tonight is a culmination of all those discussions and priorities. The proposed GP budget includes $111,943,000 and $173 in revenues, with $117,907,499 in expenditures. We are pulling $5.9 million from our fund balance to meet those needs this year. The amount required from fund balance is higher than has historically been pulled, and this is due to us anticipating that we will receive no new revenues in local taxes and the possible continued decrease in property taxes. The only change from what the board reviewed during the last work session is an increase in revenue and corresponding expenditures in the amount of $1.8 million, which is related to the one-time teacher bonus provided by the Tennessee General Assembly. Murfreesboro City Schools will act as a pass-through for this bonus, and we budgeted the anticipated amounts so we could go ahead and distribute funds quickly once they arrive. With that, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have, and we are presenting the budget for approval.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the budget?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Any questions or comments? I would say I would agree with you. We spent some time on it, and I'll have to say that it was presented very well. Good job done. All right, no questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Approval of the federal program budget.
The 2526 federal budget is also presented to the board for approval. This budget includes projected revenues and expenditures associated with Title I, Title II, Title III, a consolidated administration federal budget, IDEA Part B and Pre-K, which serves our special education students, and our 21st Century Community Learning Grant. With the exception of the 21st Century Community Learning Grant, the revenues and expenditures with these funds are considered preliminary allocations and will be adjusted as those are finalized by the Department of Ed at the U.S. Department of Ed. The total budget is $4.9 million, and that includes $1.8 million for Title I and Consolidated Admin to meet the needs of our eight Title I schools, $399,000 in Title II, which supports teacher development, $196,000 in Title III, which supports English language learners, $1.8 million in IDEA Part B, which supports the education of our students with disabilities, $49,000 in IDEA Pre-K, which supports the education of Pre-K students with disabilities, and $571,000 for our 21st Century Community Learning Grant, which supports our after-school tutoring through ESP. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and we are recommending approval as presented.
Do we have a motion to approve the federal program budget?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Approval of the 2526 school nutrition budget.
The school nutrition budget is being presented to the board for approval. This budget includes our projected revenues and expenditures associated with the school nutrition operations, including breakfast, lunch, and supper programs throughout the district, as well as our farm-to-school program. Our projected revenues is $7 million, with our expenditures a little over $8.9 million, pulling $1.8 million from our fund balance. The school nutrition fund does have a limit to fund balance to three months, so this use of fund balance is a necessary action to fulfill requirements. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and we are recommending approval as presented.
Do we have a motion to approve the school nutrition budget for 2526?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any questions? I see none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Extended school program budget, ESP.
Yes, our ESP budget includes revenue projections and expenditures, again, to operate our extended school program. This is a totally self-sufficient program that is paid for just out of the revenues generated through that program. We are projecting a little over $6.4 million in revenues, with $6.4 million also in expenditures, and we are actually projecting next year to add about $50,000 to our fund balance in ESP. I'm happy to answer any questions, and it is recommending approval as presented.
We have a motion to approve the 2526 extended school program budget.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Debt service budget.
The debt service fund is used to account for funds reserved for the retirement of the district's debt. Debt is held by the city of Murfreesboro on behalf of the school system. The expense of debt service fund include principal and interest payments for bond and loan indebtedness for city school property. Principal and interest is backed by the full faith credit and taxing power of the city of Murfreesboro. I will say, when you look at that budget, $217,601 of those funds are actually included in our general purpose budget for previously completed energy savings projects, and we are recommending approval as presented.
We have a motion to approve the 2526 debt service budget.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question? I see none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Approval of contract with Zainer Blaser.
Yes, sir. The next few items, we have several contracts coming up all in a row here. These next few items are all instructional contracts that we are requesting approval of that will be used either in our summer school program or during next school year. Ms. Arnett is also available to answer any questions the board may have on these specific contracts. But the first agreement is with Zainer Blaser and is presented to the board for approval. This agreement will provide instructional support and materials for handwriting in grades two and three. Zainer Blaser provides structured, research-based instruction in manuscript and cursive writing. The cost of the agreement is $47,531, and it was included in the FY26 general purpose budget.
We have a motion to approve the contract with Zainer Blaser.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you. Contract with Image Learning.
This contract for the Imagine Learning is to provide supports for our English language learners with engaging, research-based instructional content to support literacy development specifically for students learning English. The total cost of the agreement, or the contract, is $34,000 and is funded through our general purpose budget.
We have a motion to approve the contract.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any question? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Approval of contract with Zern.
The Zern program is an online math curriculum, which will be used in summer school and during the 2526 school year. Zern provides a comprehensive digital math program that supports personalized instruction and promotes mastery of key math concepts. Additionally, the purchase includes printed math materials for teachers and students to supplement the online program. The total cost of the program is $53,807, which includes $32,000 for the online curriculum and $21,000 for the printed math materials.
We have a motion to approve the contract.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you. Oops, I'm sorry. I jumped ahead, didn't I? Studies Weekly Science.
The contract for Studies Weekly Science curriculum is our board-approved science materials that the board adopted, or that the committee recommended adoption for and the board approved about a month ago. This curriculum will provide high-quality, hands-on science education for students in kindergarten through fifth grade. The first-year quote will cover student publications, professional development around the materials, and science kits necessary for implementation. The second through fourth-year quotes include ongoing materials and refill kits, ensuring that the students continue to receive the resources needed to engage in meaningful science instruction. The total cost of the contract is divided into two quotes. The first quote is for $594,140. That's for the initial publication, the professional development, and the science kits for the first year of adoption. The second through fourth-year quotes will be up to $249,000, which will change based on the number of additional growths or refills that are needed, and we are recommending approval as presented.
We have a motion to approve the contract.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Any question? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you. Contract. I can't read it, Trey.
Is it, the Kidham is the next one that's up? This contract for Kidham is the science-adopted textbook for sixth grade specifically. They do have a different set of materials in sixth grade. And this agreement will provide students with research-based instructional content for their science development. The total cost of the contract is $165,638, and it's for the first four years of the adoption process, and funding will be provided through the general purpose budget.
We have a motion to approve the contract with Kidham.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you. Approval of contract Open Up Resources.
The contract with Open Up Resources is for materials to be used in summer school and the 2526 school year. It will provide students in kindergarten through second grade with standards-aligned instructional resources. Specifically, this will purchase new decodable readers for students in kindergarten through second grade that aligns with the updates to our ELA curriculum. The total cost of the contract is $77,575.
We have a motion to approve the contract with Open Up Resources.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question? I mean, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Now, any question? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you. Age of Learning.
This final contract for instruction is for the Age of Learning Instructional Program. This agreement will provide students with engaging, research-based content to support literacy development during our ESP tutoring program. The cost of this contract is $144,000 and is funded through the ESP budget, and we are recommending approval as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Any question? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you. Approval of contract with Staples.
Yes, Staples is our next one, and before we move on to Staples, I will say, I'm sure Ms. Arnett is very grateful to have all of her instructional materials approved.
I will say thank you so much. Now, we can start training for our teachers before the school year ends, so thank you very much.
Our pleasure.
As far as the staple agreement, it's not nearly as exciting, but just as needed. This is, we are seeking to renew our agreement with Staples. Using the Sourcewell contract, this agreement allows us to purchase office supplies at discounted rates. The total cost of the supplies will depend on our need, but they will stay within the budget the board has approved, and we are recommending approval of the Staples contract.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you. Approval of the MOU with MPD.
We are very pleased tonight to present an addendum to our existing memorandum of understanding with the Murphlesville Police Department. Captain Fanning is here. Thank you, Captain Fanning, for joining us. He oversees our SRO division, and we know we have a great partnership with our SROs. They work just really above and beyond to take care of us, make sure we're safe, and I say the greatest deterrent we have to school safety is having SROs in all of our buildings. So while I have this chance, thank you, Captain Fanning, to you and your team. The proposed addendum is specifically to formalize operational procedures that support school safety through two primary provisions. First, it authorizes the installation and use of secure, tamper-resistant safes within our school buildings where SROs are assigned. These will be used for storage of law enforcement weapons and safety equipment, with placement and access protocols subject to the administrative oversight. Second, the addendum outlines terms under which Murfreesboro Police Department personnel, including the Murfreesboro Police Department Real-Time Crime Center, may access the Murfreesboro City Schools Surveillance Camera System. There is no fiscal impact to the district associated with this addendum. MPD will purchase all necessary equipment, and MCS will help coordinate installation, and we are recommending approval as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I am eager to move this for approval.
You moved it for approval?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Excuse me. Member hearing expenditure report.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you for approving our budget. That's acknowledgement of all the hard work of our finance and MCS leadership, so thank you. You have my report in front of you. Obviously, I've added this graph, and what the surprising part is, that's two months in a row now that our revenues are outpacing our expenditures, which is always a nice thing to see this time of year. Hopefully, we will continue that growth throughout the remainder of the year. Outside of that, our expenditures and our revenues are fairly in line, but I will be happy to entertain any questions.
Any question on the revenue report? Thank you, sir. Well done.
We do need a motion to approve that, Mr. Campbell.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you. All right, personnel report.
Yes, sir. The personnel report is presented to the board. You have that in your packet, as always. You'll start to see those personnel reports pick up here as we get to the end of the school year. Ms. Dr. Johnson and her team will start working on those. We already are obviously well into hiring for next year. Ms. Trail mentioned the retirement luncheon coming in, so you'll start to see a lot of that reflected over the next few months, but we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Enrollment report.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
If you give me just a moment, I'll go ahead and pull up the report here. This is for period seven, which you should have before you hear. So this is the ending April 11th, so the 20-day report. Our eighty, excuse me, our enrollment is 12 students less than we had, so just over 9,300 students. When you take a look at this next report for ADA, which our average daily attendance remains pretty consistent, you'll see in the graph, there's some ups and downs that will be coming in the next few slides. This pretty much remains consistent. Looking at our chronic absentee rate, there's roughly about 80 more students there for this period. Little finicky here. Truancy, about 30 more students. Jumped on here, let me switch to the keyboard. Our PTRs are just those point zeros away, just slight increases. Looking at the graph that I shared, just little different nuances, but consistently remains the same based on average daily attendance. Would be happy to answer any questions.
Can I just take a second?
Please.
One thing that's, if you can go back to that first slide with Beth's one, I do think I want to point out, it is something we're watching, that the second period in a row, we've seen a slight decrease in our enrollment, which is not something we're used to seeing. I think we talked a lot at the budget meeting about it's becoming a little trickier for us to project attendance, but that is something we're watching. Of course, the board knows our weighted full-time equivalency, which is the percentage of students that we serve, actually increased. So it's, we're kind of balancing several pieces of data there. And then Ken, could you talk a little bit about the increases specifically with truancy and chronic absenteeism and why that's standing out to you?
Yes, so I think there's a number of reasons. We're seeing our younger kids that are in kindergarten and first grade that are higher rates of those truancy and chronic absentee rates. Ms. Bush and I have been working together with the principals, and we're actually seeing less students repeating, which I think is remarkable. There's one student in particular, I won't name, had about seven weeks that were unexcused last year. If you think about that, that's about a month and a half. This year is less than a week. So as we talk about wins that are here and there for families and wraparound resources, I think that's been really helpful. We do anticipate that possibly some of the notes for chronic absenteeism relates to the 10 parent notes we provide as well, because remember, that's a combination of excused and not excused together. That might be part of the correlation of it.
Again, I just appreciate Ken's team and the work they're doing with that, but I do want to point out, you know, coming out of the pandemic, we saw really high chronic absenteeism rates. We worked really hard to get those down, and we've just noticed we're starting to see those kind of tick back up, so we're going to have, again, another focus on making sure we can help keep those down, because we know we've got to have our kids here if we're going to grow, so.
Thanks, sir. Directors update.
Just a few updates tonight. Daniel mentioned it. Again, thank you to the board for passing our budget. Y'all have heard me say that Daniel and his team do a great job with that, very, very difficult work, so I want to just publicly thank Daniel, Beth, and the entire finance team for that, and not just them, but all of our department heads, especially with this year's budget, as we've had to make some really tough decisions about cuts and what's really the most priority. Every one of them have come to the table over and over again with an incredibly positive attitude about how do we work together to meet our mission, so I want to say thank you for that. Just a quick update on a few things, really what we're dealing with right now is we're wrapping up our state testing. We've been working through that the last few weeks. It's officially over right now. We have a few makeups that we're doing, but the main testing is completed. Dr. George emailed me today. ELA is what we watch, our English Language Arts Assessments, because that will determine, we need that data back for third grade and fourth grade, and he told me as of this morning about 97% of our tests have actually been scanned in through Pearson, so we know they've received them and they're looking at that data. But as of this morning, all of our math, science, ELA materials have been shipped back to Pearson. We have about 100 makeups that we're still working on throughout our district that we'll have done this week. Sixth grade tested all online. Their online testing went incredibly smooth. That is really, again, credit to our assistant principals, Dr. George, for overseeing that. So the testing piece is in, but over the next three weeks, or actually the four final weeks of school, we will be very, very busy in that kind of assessment protocol or program. Right now, we are starting what we call roster verification, which is where teachers go in and actually have to go in, and we call it claiming, say which students they taught, so that goes to the value-added scores. And our attention is really turning to third-grade promotion. We have done two Zoom meetings recently. Ms. Arnett, when I say we, I mean Ms. Arnett, has done two Zoom meetings with parents already this year about our third-grade and fourth-grade students that are impacted by the law to make sure they understand the information. We are expecting that third-grade scores will be back on the 20th, which I think is a Tuesday or a Wednesday. We will immediately be ready to retest any student who was not proficient. So as a reminder, we can retest them on the computer, and if they go proficient, if they show proficiency at that point, they're able to promote. So we're looking at that. Ms. Arnett and her team will do another set of Zoom meetings in May as hopefully a final Ms. Arnett and her team will do another set of Zoom meetings in May as hopefully a final catch-all. So it's going to be a very busy four weeks as we go through claiming for our value-added scores, as we go through making sure our third-grade families are aware. And Ms. Arnett told me today, I think at our last meeting that she gave an update, we were talking about our summer school enrollment was down a little bit, but as I say, we're